Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, please. That's okay. Thank you everyone for being so prompt. So, this is the first Dover School Committee meeting of the year, and I would just like to say a few words. Firstly, I want to thank everybody for working so hard over the course of the summer. From the custodians who had the facilities in such fantastic shape to start off with, to all the staff in the building, administrators, administrative assistants, food service, and teachers, thank you very much. And thank you everyone at the central office for working so hard to make sure that all the planning was done for a wonderful year, but also all of the capital projects were completed. I've said words to this effect every year that I've been chair of the committee. And I just want to, I think it's worth saying it again, is that when we think of this year, we're in a very special community where we have excellent families and pupils and staff and professionals who come together for this school. And it's important, I think, just for us and the school committee, just to say a couple of words as to what we hope to focus on for the year. And for me as a chair, what I hope is that we continue to do what is our job to the best of our ability. And by law, that's making sure that the school has the finances to do what it does best, making sure that there are policies in place to keep our children safe, and create the best environment for them educationally. And also to evaluate and support the gentleman to my left in his first unit job. So, the finances, the policies, and the evaluation of the superintendent. But all of that is under an umbrella of the public schools of Dover and Sherburne's mission, which is inspiring and supporting children to be, to all of the children, to meet their fullest potential. And I want to encourage both the new superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the building staff here, educators, building leadership, people at central office, to see us as supporters of all that they do in that mission. So, thank you. And lastly, I just wanted to say a thank you to my fellow school committee members. They, it's very, it isn't that normal to have such respectful people working with you. And I'm very, very appreciative of all the respect and help and support that outbreaks, I think. So today, we have a series of items on the agenda. First one is, as always, community comments. We thank people who have attended, and I'd like to invite people to give some comments, and then we can shed light and help and reply if possible. I don't know, maybe ladies first?
Sure. So, I would, my name is Vivi LeFoutre. And I'm, I have a daughter in kindergarten, this is her first year. So, I was recently made aware that there's a recent cut on the teaching aides for the class. So, last year, I believe, and the previous years before that, there's always been one education assistant in each kindergarten class. But currently, there's only two, and we're sharing it with four classes. So, they're having like only half and a half. So, I'm wondering if, I know that, like, I've spoken to Laura, and they said because of the low enrollment at the beginning of the year, but we recently discovered that actually last year has less students in each classes than this year. So, last year, each class had around 16 students, and this year's is about 16 to 17 students. So, it's not, I think last year was 15, and this year is 16, 17. So, I'm wondering why it was not, the issue was like they didn't decide to hire more education assistants for each kindergarten class because of the number.
Sure. Thank you. So, I can shed some light on that dynamic and talk a little bit. But I'll, perhaps if I give other people a chance to talk, and then if it's the same kind of dynamic, then I can talk a bit more rather than repeat myself.
Sure. So, probably the past, we have a kindergartner and a fifth grader, and I came because I share the same concerns around kindergarten class and the aides.
Me too.
Okay.
And I would actually add a point to that, that initially went during, there was a representation made early on, I think maybe one of the first days or something, that, oh, we do have a full-time aide, and then we have an aide that's shared. And then, so the shift then became, we have, the rumor mill was that we have no aides. And then, I guess it's quicker than that, a couple nights ago, several of the parents in the class asked my son's teacher, and she said that the, she was very political about it, let's put it that way. So, she didn't give the answer, but she sort of said, we're working on some things.
Okay. Okay. Did you want to say, you should, okay. Okay. So, first of all, thank you for coming, and thanks for speaking up. So, I'll talk a little bit, and then I'll ask Andrew to say some words as well. That's okay. So, for the last few years, so the last three or four years, the building policy of managing the time of the educational assistance, the teaching aides, it changed from being, maybe about five, six years ago, it was a per classroom allocation. So, Mr. Hill would be the aide for that classroom. And that was changed a few years ago to managing the time of the educational aides in a more dynamic way, to allocating their time where the needs were, rather than having it be defined to a particular classroom all the time. So, the way that, my understanding, the way that the building leadership manage the time of the educational aides is in a much more dynamic and much more, it's a much more intelligent way fitting where the need is. There may be classrooms where no educational aides are needed, or maybe classrooms where two or three needed in a particular time. So, it's important, I think, just to realize that in a school perspective, there hasn't been a one-classroom aide per classroom as a policy for three or four years. Just by way of context, that. That doesn't mean that they're, that doesn't mean that haven't been classrooms with a hundred percent of an aide's time. It just means that from a building perspective, that's how things have been run. So, in classroom sizes, just as way of context, we're very lucky in town that we have a policy for no less than 17, no more than 22. Sometimes, the way that the big number for the grade hits us, there has to be, occasionally, we've carried 23 for a little bit, occasionally, we've gone to 16 for a little bit. Just by way of that context. We've experienced in the last 18 months, after two or three years of enrollment going down, having to let people go in terms of teachers, because we had the number go from almost 600 in the school to just under 500. That trend has changed. So, you're absolutely right that the velocity of the real estate market, the move-ins over the summer are hard to judge for the school and the school committee. And so, we are seeing now enrollment go up, and we've been seeing that for the last, maybe nine to 12 months now. We, so, and I'll ask, and as well, the town guides the school committee in terms of budgeting every year, and it tells us how they want us to build our budget. And for this current year, when we receive the guidance before the end of 2016 for this current year, the town said, please, build a level service budget, which means that if you're a family, and you're a student, and you're experiencing a particular kind of service in the previous year, the budget should be built so that the same kind of service is provided. So, that's very important. That helps, that defines how we think about money and financial planning. Obviously, some degree of estimation has to happen, because you don't know the number of move-ins over the summer, you don't know the number of, and also those move-ins, what needs those students have. Some students in a particular class may not have the needs that you assume, that they may have, some may have more needs than you assume. And you don't really know that, I would imagine, running a school until the first couple of weeks. And then, the other context I just thought was worthwhile, it's always struck me as being something worth mentioning, is that the, compared to Pine Hill, we do have a lot of aides. So, Pine Hill has 450 students, we have just under 500, Pine Hill in Sherburne, the elementary school there. And there's one educational aide for every 25 students at Pine Hill, and it's one for about every 18 here. So, that, I just wanted to have that context. At the June meeting, and if you go onto Dover Sherburne cable TV, the June meeting is there, so the former superintendent, we talked about, and he had a recommendation for the number of kindergarten sections. So, the choice was to have three classrooms of 21 to 22, at the high end of that 17 to 21 band, or should we go for four sections at the 17, just slightly 16, 17 level, expecting probably some summer move-ins that would put us higher than that. And he recommended that we go for the four sections, this committee agreed. But he did mention, after saying that, that that does, if the need for more educational assistance and more aides became obvious by the beginning of the year, it's something that the school administration and central office were gonna monitor very, very closely. So, it was flagged that we had this sectional decision, and it was, but it was flagged that it was gonna be monitored very closely. So, I just wanted to share that as some context and some decisions. So, they're, they're, from a school, from a whole of school perspective, when they manage the teaching aides for the whole of school, there hasn't been any cuts. But I understand from the perspective of the classroom, what was and what is now. It, I can understand why you're here and speaking. I'm gonna ask Andrew to hear his, anything I said was?
No, no, that sounds, that sounds about right. And it's difficult for me to comment on Bill McCall of my predecessor's kind of thinking, other than to say, because I actually believe I was here for that meeting, I was a little preoccupied thinking about my entry presentation, perhaps. But I do remember him talking about monitoring the situation. Because the one thing that did jump out at me is, in fact, the size of the kindergartens, I thought, were pretty small. But I'm accustomed to a little different system, and so my mind is kind of programmed to look for places where we might be able to reapply those resources, as Adrian was saying. So, I'm guessing that Bill thought, in looking at this, that to go with four sections of 16, or three of 16 and one of 17, if that's correct.
It is.
Okay. So, three of 16, one of 17, that those numbers are not bad, and it's kind of a trade-off. But in doing that, he would need to apply some of those educational assistance elsewhere throughout the system in order to kind of make it all mesh. And, but he did say, I know he did say, that this bore watching, you know. So, you know, I'd be curious as to what the problems people are encountering are, you know, in terms of these smaller numbers. Has it felt for parents, you know, that it was, the kids are not getting enough support, or?
Well, one thing, I don't know if you know, dealing with five to six-year-olds are very unpredictable. And they're still young, and they're still, sometimes they could have, they could still have accidents. When you have one teacher in a classroom, and there's a student that has an accident, that teacher has to put all her attention to this one student. So, what happened to the group of students who are in the classroom when the teacher couldn't pay attention to? When you have a teaching, like an education assistant in the class, that person could focus on those other children and get them to focus on what project they need to do in the classroom. So, I mean, I understand that, like, you know, older kids might not need the, you know, the supervision as much. But I think like five to six-year-old, they still do need that special, like, you know, attention from a person, like, you know, an adult in the room.
Again, sorry, do you want to say something?
No, I mean, I don't have any sense of frame of reference with the Dover school system. We were in Westwood for 13 years, but we did put two other kids through the school systems. And I would tend to reiterate that, you know, there's two things. One is, whenever you feel like something's been taken away, there's the question of why it's been taken away. So, if you had 10 aides, you reduce it to eight. The conversation would be, why do we have eight instead of 10? So, I'm looking really more for clarification. I know that my son has had a difficult transition in. So, you know, if more attention's paid to my son, it's less attention to someone else. The school's been fantastic, so it's not a question, or from my perspective, anything negative about the school, the teachers, the administration, any of those things. My middle child has had a fantastic experience here, my son is having a fantastic experience here. So, really, I came to it looking for clarification, understanding around, what was a series of texts, went to my wife, went to me, and she's like, you know, you have to go to the school committee meeting to understand what it is, because they've removed all the aides. So, that's, you know, I'm looking for a frame of reference. I think generally speaking, I would agree that, you know, even in my house with three kids, two cats, and a dog, that when something happens, everything falls apart. So, I can't imagine a classroom of 16 to 17-year-old kids, you know, kids having an issue and being able to be responsible. So, I'm not looking for more clarification, not, I'm not here to say that there is an issue, there was an issue, or anything like that, just want to understand.
I, my understanding is that there are two and a half aides or assistants designated to four classrooms. But that there's also, in one of those classrooms, a one-to-one aide. So, I think, I'm guessing that the thinking has been that, you know, we can, we can make this work. That said, you know, I mean, a situation as you referred to, you know, that can happen. That can, that can happen, there's no question about it. It can happen, it can happen really in any classroom where there's no teaching assistant. And it is certainly a challenge at the beginning of the year. You wouldn't wish that on anyone. So, I would say that that's pretty unfortunate. But I, and I do think, to respond to what you're kind of looking for, the rationale was really just, how can we apply our resources most efficiently? You know, sometimes you might say to yourself, well, we need a teaching assistant, let's say it's not kindergarten, let's say it's first grade, we want a teaching assistant in every classroom. But when you look at that day, it actually breaks out in ways where the students will have related arts, or they'll go to art, or they'll go to music. So, during those times, they might not need that second adult. And that's, I think, the rationale behind, if it can be done, that you're maximizing the staff that you get, and applying them in the most important time slots where the kids are there with the teacher, can that be done? And I think that's the rationale, I think that's, I think that's what administrators try to do, just to be as efficient as possible, because, because there isn't an endless supply of resources. That said, I'm still open to, you know, revisiting this with the administration, and, you know, continuing the conversation.
So, from, I was gonna ask about next steps, and I was just gonna frame that. From the, from the town, and Erica's here, I'll liaise it for more, but I would, I think from the town, I often feel that level service guidance is code for, please support to continue doing things as well as you've been doing. And from us, I think, and I won't speak for everyone, but tell me if I'm speaking, I'd have turned it, if the administration in the building, and you guys are our educational professionals, if you told us that there was something to be done, I think people here would support that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I would think a possible recommendation is to just, you were sort of talking about that, Andrew, is, let's monitor the situation, let's work with Laura and Deb, and sort of understand what's going on. And if there's an opportunity, or a need, or a necessity, then we review it. But, you know, we've made a decision based on the information we had in June. And I, you know, I think we just stick with that and see how it goes. That would be my, my comment.
Can I ask a question about the June meeting? Because I know that Bill said something about, let's monitor the situation. And maybe Dawn, you may know as well, from behind the scenes. Was he monitoring for concern that those numbers were gonna spike?
Right. So, there was a chance that when we left the four classrooms, because if there were move-ins, we'd be offset. If we went to three, we had like no wiggle room. So, I think he, his point was, if we started getting more numbers, we'd reassess sharing the aides. But the way the numbers were at that evening, I think that's what his recommendation was.
And that pretty much bore out over the summer, right? Where we would be, I mean, we had, we had some surprises and some move-ins, and the numbers did change from June to September.
Not much in the kindergarten class, I think.
63 was what we expected in June, 65 is what it is today.
Okay.
But I will say, interestingly enough, the kindergarten class last year, at least when I quickly look back, was about 64. And now, the first grade class is 75. So, there is a significant number of move-ins that went from that kindergarten last year. 11 move-ins happened to go into a place in the first grade.
Right, right.
So, that class has grown. And it's, we just kind of understand where the resources need to be, and go from there.
My view on that, I think, Dawn, you're right, and it was, I think, Bill used a phrase that if we needed to hire more EAs, then it's easier to do that than hire an extra kindergarten teacher at the end of August to scramble doing that. But I'm, maybe I'm wrong, I'm also very sensitive of, and kindergarten classrooms need, especially kindergarten, when we don't know the students coming in, the evaluating the level of need, it's really only gonna be done and understood in these first weeks, I think. So, again, for me, I'm, I'm not an education professional, I'm a school committee member. I would, I'd come back to, if Andrew, in your discussions, if you feel that the right thing to do is to change the situation now, you'd have support, I know from us. Erica?
Hi, this is Erica Alders. As Adrian mentioned, I am the board committee liaison to Chikering. So, I'm here in that capacity, but I'm also the mother of a kindergartner. And I just want to share a couple of my thoughts on it. And Adrian mentioned we were budgeting towards level service. And having a first grader, I have very key knowledge on what the kindergarten was like directly last year. And Vivi advised daughters are in different classes, but I can share that we have the same issue with a child having multiple accidents during the day, pulls the one teacher away. And the teachers are fabulous, but they're only one person, and they have a half-time aide. Also, things like meltdowns or anxiety also pulls a teacher's attention. And on the level service issue as well, I think of things last year where my son's teacher had a full-time aide, and they would have two teacher tables at the same time, and students would rotate throughout the class, an independent table, a one-teacher table, a second-teacher table. So, there was this individualized instruction going on from two teachers. And to me, level service would mean, they would be receiving the same level of individualized instruction as the students were receiving last year. So, it just, from a math perspective, it seems that the enrollment numbers are similar, it can't work out that my daughter's receiving the same level of individualized instruction that my son received last year without a second full-time aide. So, and I want to say thank you for reconsidering the issue and looking into it. And I know the numbers have changed, and I'm sure you guys will be talking to the classroom teachers and hearing all these stories firsthand, but want to say thank you for revisiting it.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you everyone for coming. Really appreciate it. And if anyone has any, if anyone has any questions on this or other issues going forward, please feel free to email any of the school committee members, and any of them will talk to you and help explain and clarify questions. But as you say, exactly that, please do.
So, to clarify, I'm not just roaming out, Steve.
Yes.
Kids and the two daughters.
No, no. And, Vivi, you mentioned a 22-month-old, so.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on, I'd like to move to the principal's report, and thank Mrs. Dial.
Thank you, good evening. We've had a wonderful launch to the school year. We're really excited to see everybody back. We have a great family together. I was struck in the opening days of school how diverse we have become, I think relative to urban schools, it might not appear that way, but we really have. And talking to staff who have been here for 12, 15 years, they comment on that as well. And I love the fact that we are more closely mirroring society at large and giving everyone the opportunity to learn from one another. I just think that's really exciting. In terms of curriculum and learning, we have a lot of new this year. We have the next level of the everyday math curriculum. We have new FOS science units that every grade level is rolling out this year, which we're all very excited about. And fortunately, we have been able to commit the professional development time to let teams really explore those. Many folks did start over the summer. That summertime professional development is really valuable for us, and they'll be continuing to do that. We're also rolling out a new option for goals this year, which we have labeled study groups that will allow for multidisciplinary, multi-grade-level folks to work together around something that they're really passionate about. So, I guess those are the highlights. Do you have any questions?
I wanted to know if there are any examples of the study groups, how many topics?
Sure, we've been brainstorming for a while. Ones that have come up in the past would be literature circles. How can we enhance those in the earlier grades, the guided reading groups? Another one is a continuation of our PBIS effort that started, I would say, full force last year. And looking at how can we embed some of these practices more so throughout our school. And we have a lot of people who are on board with that already, although we're not gonna be finalizing them until probably the 26th of our next staff meeting. There are lots of great ideas out there, so it's exciting. And our PLC leaders did a fabulous job rolling it out with a skit. And people are repeating some of the lyrics that may have been shared. But it's the full range from like direct curriculum links to some of the other pieces that are really important to schools, but not necessarily on a curriculum map.
Okay, okay. That's helpful, thank you.
I have two curriculum questions. The first one was in terms of the new science curriculum. I know in fifth grade now, the science is, all these elements are taught by the classroom teacher. Is that throughout all the school?
Yes, that is a change that we've made this year. In the past, different teachers have taught different units. The benefit of that is it allows them to really develop an expertise within that. The challenge was that it's, because they had to rotate classes, it locked them into a particular time of the day. We always set that aside, but if a teacher wanted to, say, roll science into their ELA block, they could still do that, but there were some limitations there. So, we decided to change it this year. And Deb, would you like to add anything to that?
The teachers worked last year with Pine Hill, so across the school, KDFI was a shared unit. So, everyone in third grade will be teaching a bird adaptations and authority unit. And then, the FOS kits that we bought were there. And then, one beloved unit that they can hang on to that they've used in the past. So, the nice piece is in third, fourth, and fifth grade, instead of having five units of the grade, there's three that they can sink deeply into, instead of scooting it across the top of five. We're excited.
And I'm imagining much like, I've seen examples of, let's say, a student learning about the American Revolution, and some vocabulary can be folded into there, some reading elements can be folded, all types of subjects can be folded into this one subject area. Talk about this with Mrs. Chase a lot. And now, science has a chance to perhaps do more of that, because it's with the same teacher. And then, just on the new everyday math online, I know the students didn't have their log-ons at the very beginning of the year, is, will that happen soon?
They're off.
Okay. I'm updating on that. Any other questions or comments? I just want to recognize Mrs. Hugo and congratulate her on her award from the Norfolk County Teacher Association. Over the summer, so we had that in the June packet. Wasn't mentioned, but now you're here, I can mention it. Congratulations. Okay, perfect. So if we could perhaps, if you move on to the- Sorry, I'm in June, Dr. Ladue, that's not the one. Brilliant, thanks a lot. Could we move on to?
No.
Beth, could we move on to this more quick?
Yes, thank you, school committee, Dr. Keo. So it's been exciting. I had the opportunity to be here over the summer and diving deep, kind of in a quiet space, into all teaching and learning across Dover Sherburne. And then since then, our teachers and students have arrived. And I've been spending a lot of time meeting with curriculum leaders, program directors, teacher leaders, and, and listening to all of the strengths of Dover Sherburne and areas that we maybe perhaps can improve. And starting Friday, I'll be actually visiting classrooms. So I'll get to interact with the students and see the teaching and learning in action and make the whole picture kind of come together, which is very exciting. Coordinated program review. So as you know, we had a, a formal review from the Department of Education last year. And they looked at our work and our adherence to the guidelines in special education, civil rights, and English language learning. And there was, I believe, eighty-five areas in which we were either commended or we were meeting the requirements. And there was only a handful where we're not. So since then, we have received an approved corrective action plan. We have an internal chart where everybody's responsible for their own portion of what we have to upload in the next couple of months to show that we have changed policies, improved practice to meet the expectations. Our first deadline was last Friday. And we actually not only submitted what was due in September, we've also got ahead through October.
Of course we have.
So we are well on our way to meeting the June deadline. And I have no concerns that we'll be ahead of schedule throughout the, throughout the rest of the year. Professional development, as Ms. Dial said, our teachers did some wonderful work over the summer. I had an opportunity to spend some time in Ann Larson's professional development work. She's from the Landmark School. And she was working with both an elementary and a secondary cohort of teachers in August, working on strategies that benefit students with language-based learning disabilities. But I think the big takeaway for me, as well as for some of the teachers, is that the skills that you can use to support learners in the classroom, either by hooking them and engaging them and activating that prior knowledge, those are skills that we can use for all kids. And I think that, you know, really teachers are starting to realize that that idea of universal design is, is good. And that the more we learn about individual student profiles, the more we're going to be able to benefit and meet the needs of all learners. Mentoring and induction. So way back on October twenty-fourth, we had our mentoring and induction kickoff. Our mentees met with our mentors. We did some work around building relationships. We had a bus tour of Dover and Sherburne. There was a quiz afterwards. We had lunch and then-
School bus tour.
Yes, oh yes. And there was microphones so that, you know, our, our guide could look forward, but still be heard in the back. We learned about the Dover demon and the Calhoun Sherburne, of course. So the day was fun. There was a lot of positive energy. I think that it's always good to invite some new teachers into the district and get new perspective and new energy. And there was a lot of proud moments, but I think for our veteran teachers to be able to share, you know, the culture and the values that DS has. As Ms. Dial said, we're already working on science and math. And here we are about to kick off the English program review. So I think just to highlight here, based on the work that's been done in the past, science last year in particular, we're going to be looking to expand the program review a little bit and make it a little bit more dynamic. Our self-study, we're going to dig a little bit deeper, I think, into teaching, learning, instruction, what our assessments look like ourselves. And then also sending out folks within the department to, A, learn from experts in the field, whether it's going to conferences, reading books, visiting other schools who are similar to us and seeing what teachers are doing in the classroom there and bringing that information back. As well as, once we have a self-study about what we're doing well and where we think we can improve, having a neutral third party come in and reflect on what we're doing and perhaps help highlight our successes and where we need to celebrate and perhaps give us some ideas on where we can improve too. So the process is going to be a little bit more dynamic, I think, seeing that it's already September. Next year is where you'll really see the improvement because we'll have this year math preparing for next year, whereas English we're in it already. Does that make sense? Okay. Educator evaluation. Our leaders have been doing a great job meeting with the educators in the district and really streamlining their goals within the evaluation system to match the goals of the school and the district. So I'm confident that the work, the wonderful work that's been done already is going to continue to move everybody kind of forward in the same direction, whether it's, you know, curriculum review, social emotional learning, and supporting Dr. Keo's strategic planning process. The MCAS results. So as you know, younger grades had the new exam last year, the next generation MCAS exam. So those results have not been published yet. They're still working on creating benchmarks and deciding how the performance levels are going to be determined. Preliminary results for the legacy MCAS, the old MCAS, were published just to principles though, to make sure that there weren't discrepancies in student cases or student reports. Hopefully, all of the information will come out in October. And I know that our school leaders and our curriculum leaders will be here to present to you that information. My only caution is that because the test is new, we're going to be comparing apples to oranges. So we can look at our oranges this year and compare them to other oranges in other districts. But it's going to be hard to compare last year's report to this year's report.
We're well-trained in that.
I'm sure Deb will make it very clear for us.
And so we, the timing seems a little uncertain because of the next gen. So if, if it's possible by our meeting on the seventeenth of October, that's great. If it's not, that's also great. We'll go through it whenever, whenever the right time is for it to be done.
Thank you. I think October seventeenth is wishful thinking.
Yeah, that's why, normally it is the October one, but from what you said, and it being the seventeenth, not later on.
Thank you.
So keep us in touch with that.
Sure.
I had a question on the landmark event, the landmark event, the Ann Larson. How, how many Chicaring teachers were lucky enough to go? Because I bet it was fantastic. Was it one or two, or was it a little more?
Do you know the exact number? I can give you a rough estimate. There was- So there's probably twelve elementary teachers there. And I would say probably half for Chicaring and half Pine Hill. Six or so.
That's great, thank you. Any comments or questions?
So you, I, you have a terrific opportunity of having, you know, great perspective and also being new, but being new on the inside. And you said you're taking in a lot and finding out, getting feedback, what, what's done well, what can be improved. Are, are those observations going to be rolled up into a report that's shared out? Or that's going to be rolled up to, to Dr. Keo?
So all of that information is going to roll up into Dr. Keo's, his entry plan is a strategic plan. And there's a few, I think, opportunities, windows of opportunity that we can take advantage of this year. You know, we don't want to start too much too fast. But I think, you know, bringing the professional development committee back together is a real priority. And I think everybody in the district, no matter what constituency you're talking to, is eager to see teachers get the professional development that they want and they feel is rewarding. So that's easy. And then I think, you know, starting to look at our evaluation process. We have the QPO program, which is where teachers can pair with a colleague and either observe each other's classes and have some reflection time or dig into a research topic. That's, I think, something that we need to expand upon and clarify the goals for. That's something that we can do this year. But yes, all of it eventually is going to roll right into Dr. Keo's strategic plan. So at this point, I, I think I'm working with the team and listening to kind of develop my own, what will be eventually my marching orders from Dr. Keo.
Thank you.
I had a question. Will we cut the number of professional development days? Have you seen any impact or potential impacts on how that will dive with the plans for professional development?
I wouldn't have that experience because I don't have the past relative perspective. And I'm still also learning how different schools use that time.
Maybe if you didn't know any differently, just work with what you have.
Yes, but I know that, you know, I see it in, in the, in the times that I've spent in the schools and working with the curriculum leaders, just that there's such efficiencies in terms of the use of time that they have during the day together, but also during their faculty meetings and the PLC time. There's a lot of work already happening. So I think, you know, the goals and, and the school's going to continue to move forward regardless. You know.
If someone can just make sure to circle back to us if we start to see that's an issue anyway.
If the professional development committee does a fantastic job rolling out ideas for early release days, perhaps there'll be demand for more, but we'll, we'll see.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, that's great. Hand over to Dr. Keo.
Excellent, well, thank you, Beth. I, it was actually a nice segue for really what I've been working on for the past three or four months at this point, which is really kind of probing deeply into who we are and what makes us tick. It is a great system. My gosh, what a good system. You guys have done so much hard work. Those who've been here for, for years and on the school committee, all the effort, the time and energy you put into it, it shows. And it's a very professional atmosphere, very professional staff, and a very supportive community. That's coming out over and over and over how much people value this school system. But that said, like any school system, they, people have, you know, pointed out to places where we could perhaps do better. You know, could, could we be more focused in our professional development? You know, more is not necessarily better. But better focus and more differentiation, I think, is what people have been calling for of, of the professional development opportunities. So I expect that these things are going to surface in the strategic plan. Right now, it's still, I'm still interviewing people, if you can believe it. That's starting to wrap up. I had a parent coffee last week. And we have the parent coffee coming up in, I think it's the first week of October. Of course, I bring it up and I don't have the date in front of me here at Chicaring. But I've had opportunities to meet with the Dover PTO, which has been fantastic. So all of that is just providing me with great insights. The, the opening of school, although it seems like ancient history now, was such a hugely important event for me and for us as an administrative team. I think it's a lot of change. You know, a new superintendent, a new assistant superintendent, standing up there on opening day with the faculty. It was, I think, really just amazing, especially in that I was a graduate, as was Henry, having gone through the system and to be standing before all those people. And it really gave me a great and unique opportunity to say thank you to people. Not only, there weren't too many of my teachers there, unfortunately, but one or two. Casey Potts is still there. But the, but really the opportunity as a parent to say thank you for the wonderful education that my daughters received. So that was a really special day for me. We also had the chance to introduce everyone, obviously Beth and the, the new staff. It was, and all of the administrators. So in many ways, we stuck with the tradition. This is something that you guys have done here for a long time. It was important to me to be respectful of that tradition. I think it really works. We did recognize a few Chicaring folks, a palateer for twenty-eight years, Steve Amorato for thirty-nine years as the custodian, Stephanie Majkic as a food service worker, has been here for twenty-five years, and Donna Bakjovki, if I pronounced that right, I don't think I did, twenty years as an EA. So these are folks who've dedicated so much of their lives to our children. It was really a special opportunity. They, they were all recognized by Rachel and Claire Graham from the Rachel Committee. So that was a nice event. Obviously, you know, it's, it's one of the greatest pleasures of being an administrator. You get to see these kids on opening day. And the parents drop them off and they're like wondering, what happens from here? And we get to see it. So it's, it's amazing to watch the kids reconnect with their teachers and with each other. And there's a lot of joy. And I imagine that's why they came home like bears when we were, when we were sending our kids out to school on the first day, because they're exhausted by the end of the day. There's so much emotion involved. And so I'm sure that the parents were thrilled to get them off the bus that afternoon. But, but it was a great, a great first day for us. The, the facilities, as you know, and we're going to talk about and take a look, are in great shape. This building is obviously well-maintained. We did some great work on it this summer. I'm not going to really get into that too much. I've included in my report the, the new staff members. You, you can see our student enrollment figures are attached and are within policy guides, guidelines. And, and other than that, I just want to be sure, as you did, to, to thank all the people who made my transition to Dover Sherburne such a smooth process. And that's not easy. It's, it's a complex organization. And I had tremendous support throughout, even through the interview process with Brooke coming out to my former system. And Michael Jaffe was there. Henry was part of the tour. Adrian was involved. Rachel, I think, just got on board. Is that right? But everyone on the school committee, and really the three school committees, was incredibly supportive. The administration was incredibly supportive, whether at the central office level or the building level. It's just been a wonderful transition for me, so I'm really grateful for that. And I just want to thank everyone. And I know that I can't possibly hit everyone on the list, but the amount of work that goes into making this system operate is incredible. People deserve a ton of credit, so. So last but not least, I want to be sure to thank Bill McCall of, as I said, my predecessor. Bill did everything in his power to leave this system in really good shape and to give me all the tools and background information that I would need to be successful. So thankful to Bill and obviously to Cheryl Ingersoll, who was just, just unbelievable throughout the whole process.
Excellent. Any questions to Andrew?
On the, the enrollment report, I'm just wondering if we could get some, there was actually a, a template from, that, that we saw last year that had some historical information and kind of how things, a look ahead, how things are trending. I don't know if you've seen that, but I found it really helpful. I don't know if that's difficult to-
But Phil left all that. We just haven't had time to sit down together and update it. But there's, this is, this is bare bones because we're really not even-
Sure.
We have good enrollment information yet, yeah.
What, what we were thinking is that typically October first is when the state says, you know, that's kind of your, that's the date they want the enrollment figures because they figure there's still a lot of movement between the start of school and October first. So I think traditionally you, you've gotten a more detailed report on enrollment in, at the October.
And it's particularly helpful as we get closer to the calendar or the school calendar turning over. And I, you know, I would agree with you, Michael. Understanding the situation where we are and just starting. But as we, if you have any suggestions on how to tweak it, you know, it was a nice addition with what Bill did. But if there's more we could do, then that's great. But especially as we start to try to guesstimate what's going to happen going into the following school year. That was really helpful for me, so.
The, the enrollment projections, and, and I haven't looked at Bill's success rate. I have definitely seen the chart. I can't comment on his success rate, but I'll tell you that in, in my experience, enrollment projections are really, really difficult.
By his own admission, that was one of his favorite things to do.
Yeah, Bill loves doing that. He clearly loves doing that. I'm, I'm not as keen on it, mainly because-
Her dad likes to do it.
I like to pour my energy into things that I know are going to bear fruit. And I'm not always sure that that does. But I think we can certainly take a run at it.
It's still, so it's a model that putting in a few numbers in, it does give you some idea.
No, it's good, it's good. I like how you just get the role in trend, remember it was a three-year role.
First year, right, first year, three.
What, what you can't predict is the mood of the people and the economy. Things just swing very quickly and-
Adrian gets the soccer enrollment numbers.
But Amazon-
That's the blank box. Okay. Any, any final comments, questions to the superintendent? Tremendous, all right. Let's hand over to Dawn for the closeout and then we'll have a little walk.
Sure, so, so in the closeout, we really ended up about where we reported to you guys in mid-June. Our salaries looked at, we ended up about fifty thousand dollar negative variance, which actually is quite good considering we added those two classroom teachers post-budget. So some things happened in our favor to keep that number from growing to two. So some things happened in our favor to keep that number from growing to two salaries of teachers, plus we also added some EAs last year. So the salary gods were in our favor. On the expenditure side, we've reported all along, we had a positive operating variance of about $70,000, as it turned out. The big chunk of that, remember, was the oil. And we don't know what oil price we're going to lock in, so we're very conservative, but that almost paid for a whole teacher in itself, the savings on the oil.
Good timing on that.
So we've already locked in. Yeah, so we're at same, we're like right at where we were last year. We did cut the budget, though, because we had a huge...
Yeah, no issue.
So we did trim it a little bit, but you'll still have some safety there.
Really good timing.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we, we're in a tech cooperative bid, and the only school in our district that we actually bid with is Holliston. They purchase about 100,000 gallons of oil, so we totally...
Where are we?
We're about 25,000.
Wow.
So our pricing is based on their larger volume, which works out really well, though. So it's about $1.64 is what we locked in for the year. So the added district is, again, as we all know, the added district net numbers don't always tell you exactly what's happened in that scenario, but we had started the budget with 36 added district placements. We ended up with 41 as of June 30th. However, that only resulted in a negative tuition variance of about 14,000 because of all the moves that we had that went both ways. We, our biggest negative variance was in transportation, and they had not, the year before, budgeted all of our summer transportation or our additional cost. They had just picked up the matrix cost. So we had, we incurred additional $26,000. We picked that up to new budget for this year. So we had a negative added district variance of about 40,000. So when you net that all together, we had really just a, an ignoring circuit breaker. We had a negative overall operating variance of about 19,000. And it did have a typo, I see. The return to the town is not our total circuit breaker, but it's the 1,000, if you look at your status of appropriations, it's the $1,095,630. Total circuit breaker reimbursement for the year was $1,115. So on your statements this year, I, I did it a little different. Normally, they take the circuit breaker and they net it in, so it's so hard for you to tell what's going on. I left all of our numbers whole and just brought the circuit breaker reimbursement down at the bottom. That way you're really seeing your financials as they are, and then the clean circuit breaker return.
I just want to, I just want to repeat that key statistic. On a, on a budget of almost $10 million, we were within $19,000.
Yeah.
Dollars.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Which is pretty good. We'll see if we end up that way this year. Any questions on the '17 operating results before we just look at the special revenue revolving funds?
So just confirming what I, what I think you said, the, the transportation costs were, were less of a, kind of a swollen cost and more of maybe just a miss of the summer. We, we don't have something that has spiked up.
So, no, what happens is our added district, we contract with Except, and so they set our, our transportation costs for the year, they, they set it like in the, like December of the previous year, and they say, this is what we're going to charge you. So regardless of what happens, that's what we're going to get charged. Where we missed in budgeting in, for fiscal year '17 was, in addition to that matrix cost, we also have transportation that we provide during the summer, and we also have, they do charge you extra for any late bus runs, like if we have any students who pick a late bus, like they have here, we provide that. And we had some buses that had monitors on them. That cost, we didn't, we didn't budget for. So those were costs, additional costs that we were charged that were not budgeted.
But not extraordinary year over year? They would have been, are they generally in line with prior years?
They are, but if you remember, we saw a large increase in our transportation for fiscal year '18, mainly because of this matrix formula that Except is using, is not working out extremely well. They incurred like a $700,000 deficit, and so they had to, we had to build that into the next year's rates, and so they're trying to figure out, they did this, they did the matrix in order to provide smooth budgeting for districts, but I don't, they took everything into consideration, so they're still trying to refine that. So my guess is when I come forward with your budget for fiscal year '19, you're going to see another pretty high spike, because we can't keep up with all the changes, and that's not just, it's all the districts that participate. It's, it's just, there's a lot of new volume.
And would the extra five added district students from 36 to 40, 36 budgeted to 41 actual, would, that would also...
You're going to see that, you're going to see that in...
Well, we saw it this summer, that's part of the summer cost as well, isn't it, that we...
No, that summer is just people go summer programs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Five more than...
The five more than, so we had five more this year. When we, when they do our census for the next budget year, that's where we'll pick those people up, yeah. So there's a delayed increase in your, in your matrix cost here.
I'm just curious, does Except have any competition, or is that just...
Um, you know, and that's analyzed and analyzed, and they'll, there is some competition, you can go out and do it yourself, but they do run a large conglomerate of transportation.
So it's a fun with the scale here.
Yep, and they do all the query checks of all the drivers, they query it all, there's a lot that goes into that.
Oh, I'm not saying that, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, it comes up all the time. But that is our, that, right now is still our best option for transportation, given our, our needs.
Okay.
Just quickly on the, you have your June report for your special revenue revolving funds. I gave you some notes in the report. I've started to add, I've added circuit breaker on there now, so that you, because that is a revolving fund, so you can look at that and see that we aren't carrying forward anything. We are dollar-for-dollar clearing out our circuit breaker fund every year. The great news was food service basically doubled their fund balance, and that's based on, we did raise the prices for fiscal year '17. The food service group, just, and all three districts are seeing an uptick in participation, and it was one of those years fortunate across all three districts. There were no big emergencies or repairs or anything that ate into their profits, so we were able to end up with almost a, you know, $27,000 fund balance, which is great as we start looking more closely at capital replacement needs in the cafeteria. And that will be part of the onsite insight. Gifts, I'll just point out that you've got 15,000 sitting in that balance that we will soon be paying out for the AB system. That has not, those bills have not come through yet, but this is also as of June 30th. And then the preschool, we basically have a small carry-forward balance that was remaining after all the activity we had last year.
Okay, thank you. So that, so again, other than the 15,000 that will be spent, so those figures should be as they are today.
For the gift, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then your building fund will go down a little bit more, because that's where we're taking the remaining of that project, it's going to come out of the building fund.
Yeah, and the, the expenditures on building metal, is that, that's custodian overtime?
Exactly. We just, we started, and I, I said in my notes, we started, reinstated that, because I know in the past we had, and I think it just stopped for a year or two, but there is a lot of overtime...
Yeah, it's good to know.
That was going into our general fund that really should have been head to this fund. So we started it after, I think in October of last year.
We talked a few years ago about doing the published rates, because there was a difference in the rates of people. Did anything ever happen?
No, I mean, that was, that was one, I think that was probably one last thing, um, last thing on Bill's bullseye.
Oh, really? Literally all listed?
All three districts, the building, structure for the fees, and it's just...
It sounds like people are paying quite different rates.
Well, I think there's some grandfathered deals, yes. But we're, we're definitely, we're doing better at doing all that, but we can probably be a little more aggressive in some of that, though.
More consistent would be a lovely...
Yes, more consistent.
Yeah, I just remember that conversation.
I'm sure that's to come.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions to Dawn? Okay, so this is in the, in the, in the agenda when we were going to, we're going to take a recess and a quick walk around, but I know that there's a short video which I thought might be nice to put, pop in at this point, and then we can break and see the wonderment of the capital programs this summer.
Cheryl, she is very kindly, can we continue the slideshow for us? It's Chickering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, tremendous. So next item, capital planning update, but I'd like to, just before we get that update, let's see what's been updated. So I'm going to call for recess for a brief walk around. Ten minutes.
Oh, you're welcome.
So thank you, everybody. Called to come back from recess. Thank you. So we're going to have a, a capital plan update from Mrs. Vittori, then we have a consent agenda to vote on, to communications, and last couple things, so.
So I, I think rather than a capital planning update, it's really just a fiscal year '18 update, it covers multiple things. I shared with you that we hope to have a September 30th status of appropriations for you at your October meeting. We're in the process now, since the contracts have been ratified, of paying everyone their new salaries and getting the general ledger all up to date. If you remember, we budgeted using our fiscal year '17 salaries, so now that the contracts are finalized, we'll go back and take those dollars and put them all in the right buckets. So we'll start working on that. As to date, there hasn't been any unexpected operating procedure or expenditure, so that is good to report. On the added district side, we are still really early, and there's still a lot of movement, but when I checked in with Christine Smith for my report, she did bring to my attention that we're probably looking at right now a negative operating variance of about 100,000. Some of that is, happened before. If you remember, we were bringing to school committee after like March, April, May, June, changes in placements. That is in, worked, worked into that 100,000, because we're comparing where we are now to what we budgeted. So some things are things that have already been in the process, but there are some new things in the pipeline, and we'll have more information for you.
How's that number stacked up with previous years, at the same place that we are?
Well, we really haven't had, to be honest, have not had consistency. If you remember, we were a couple hundred thousand dollars over before, like year before last. And then this year, you know, we were just a little under. We usually end up either right on or, or under, so it's, it's been a change for us to be over quite a bit.
Yeah.
But there's just been a lot of activity in this arena.
And just for, for context, Dawn, if, if one were to think of, just for financial terms, I know it's, every case is very individual, but for financial terms, a move to an added district placement is approximately $40,000? Should one think of it like that?
That's probably like an entry level.
Entry level?
Yeah.
And, and if a placement is recommended for residential program...
Then you're like 300,000.
Then 300,000. And similarly, if we have a return of a residential case or a, a return of an added district, whatever reason, those figures are obviously inverse.
Exactly. So I think when we sort of summarize what's happened so far, you're going to see some coming in, some going out, some being changed in their placements.
Well, it's had a program at the high school that was going to affect a couple of residents that are in the region.
Right, so we did have a, a return that will, that is playing into this.
It's, it's in, it's embedded in that projection.
Yeah, it is, it is. But we've also had a lot of activity of out placements, so...
There's also the, the transportation cost, so, correct?
Well, no, that's not in that number.
No, what I'm saying is that, that, that 40,000, I think that's low ball.
Well, the 40 is just tuition. I mean, that's, that's tuition, that's how, right, right.
Of transportation, which can be significant.
Right, right.
So, can I just ask on that? Just as was mentioned on the enrollment, for the next meeting, you'll be in a situation to give us some...
A little more detail, yeah. A little more detail. And then we'll also hopefully be able to give you our preliminary circuit breaker reimbursement for anticipated for fiscal year '18. We have not seen that certified yet or, you know, approved, but it has been released by the DOR that, or DESI, that the initial reimbursement rate for circuit breaker this year is looking like it's going to be more like between 64 and 66 percent. We've gotten so comfortable with it being like 70, that this is a little bit of, you know, not a surprise, but a little bit of a reduction. My guess is, is that although they did increase what they budgeted for circuit breaker, I think everyone's submittals have increased. And so it, you know, it's, it's impacting that way. So we'll, we'll wait and see. But again, you have the luxury of 100% budget to cover every dollar of added district, so the circuit breaker is just money to hopefully either help you if you fall into a deficit or to be returned to the towns. So it doesn't have any major negativity on you.
Very grateful.
Yes. Facilities, I think we've seen, talked about, and then since this is your first time, I just wanted to sort of summarize again the new warrant approval process.
Yeah.
And hopefully Cheryl sent you...
She did, yep, absolutely fantastic.
The PDF with all the warrants that have been submitted since July 1st. So every month you have a meeting, you'll have a PDF package of anything that's been paid for the rest of you to see it, whoever didn't sign.
And I just, I would just ask, I know everyone's lives are very busy, but it, school committee members do take the time to go through those. Not only is it edifying that you understand where the money goes on a regular basis, but it's also, you know, it's part of the governance for us to look at it to make sure that it's all going out in places that it should be.
And I think the reports you have, and I, I thought I had told both committees that we were changing the reports, and again, that was because we worked with the town to cut out a lot of duplicate efforts.
That's fantastic.
So we did it both on the expenditure side and the payroll side, but it actually reflects more of our books, so it's easier for you guys to look at that than what you used to look at for what we prepared for the towns. So this way you actually can see it and probably can correlate it to where it goes in our budget, unlike looking at the towns. So that was beneficial for everyone. On fiscal year '18 project status, I think we have gone through and seen everything and talked about everything. There's no, is there any questions on that? Otherwise, just to bring to your attention, onsite insight was here in July. We have a draft report that both Brooke and Michael have received copies of, so I will be getting a meeting on the books with Ralph, the four of us. be getting a meeting on the books with Ralph, the four of us, to sit down and just sort of walk through. Again, it's a draft that no one has really had any input into yet, but this will be the critical piece to make sure that when we have it found and finalized, it's a good working tool for us, and we can go over some of the nuances, Michael and me, because we have made a few changes. And if it all works out, we're hoping to have their consultant here in October just to do a brief presentation, a sort of a package that they do.
Tremendous. It'd be tremendous for the liaisons from Capitol as well to be...
Right, right.
Any questions to Dawn on those issues?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay. Brilliant, thank you. Moving on. So we have a consent agenda, and thank you very much for, for reading that in advance. We have the approval of minutes of June 19th for our committee, and again, the approval of the warrants, which Dawn just spoke about. Do we have any discussional questions on those two items before we go to a vote approving it? Thank you very much. May I have a motion approving the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Michael. Second, please.
Second?
Thank you, Brooke. All those in favor? Thank you, that's brilliant. For your communication, you've got our meet, the calendar meeting for all the school committees in the two towns, school committee assignments. There's one element of that I just want to comment on. Superintendent asked, given that the town of Dover is accelerating its analysis of the health insurance issues and the changes going forward, the town administrator and superintendent asked if someone from Dover School Committee member could be our representative on that, and given he's expressed an interest in this to me in the past, I asked, and Michael Jaffe accepted. So thank you very much for that, we really appreciate it. It's going to be important for the town, and all very like, all very grateful. There's the program review in your communications that was mentioned earlier in this meeting, so please take a look at that. And two minutes, one from the region, June 6, one from Sherbon, June 13. Are there any other business items? And without any, I'd like to adjourn at 8:04. Thank you very much.